Hello. Welcome to this candidate forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Marin County. I am Kay Noguchi with the League of Women Voters. Our timekeeper is Lori Nardone. The two candidates with us today are running for a four-year term on the Board of Supervisors, District Five. They are Judy Arnold and Tony Schreier. The candidates have been invited to make opening statements of two minutes. We'll begin with Judy, then Tony.
I promised you in 2006 that if you sent me to the Board of Supervisors, I would listen and always respond. I would govern with transparency and not shirk from the hard decisions. Some of my recent accomplishments are: I was a founder of the Marin Economic Forum to support existing businesses and to attract new ones to Marin. I brought a watershed study to Nevada, which is an enlightened way to control funding while protecting habitat and restoring creeks. As Chair of SMART, I can say definitively, there is a train coming to town. We have raised the funds to go to the Sonoma County Airport and to begin work to connect with the ferry in Larkspur. SMART acquired more than 56 contiguous acres of tidal marsh property in Marin, known as the Miramonte Marina. It will serve as wetland mitigation, saving the taxpayers millions of dollars. I ask Assemblymember Mark Levine to craft a bill that would change Marin's designation from metropolitan to suburban, thereby changing our housing density requirements from 30 units per acre to 20 units per acre. That bill, just last Thursday, passed out of the Assembly Committee unanimously, went to a second committee, did the same there, and now it goes to the Assembly and onto the floor of the Senate. I added education as a priority for the county. I'm working with Marin's strong start for early education programs. I supported school fuel with my community service funds. The county has a balanced budget and recently received a AAA bond rating from the three top bonding agencies. And we have led California in instituting significant pension reform. I love my job as your supervisor, representing this unique county, and I'm asking for your vote June 3rd to continue my service to this community. Thank you.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to speak to the Nevada voters. Here are some things I will do if I'm elected. Public safety is the county's number-one obligation. I will always vote to ensure that the sheriff has adequate funds to deliver public safety in the unincorporated areas of Marin County. I'm committed to diversifying and strengthening Marin County's economy. I do not believe county government is doing enough to attract businesses to provide jobs. I believe there are too many local regulations preventing or discouraging new businesses for starting up or current businesses to expand. I will consider job creation as a top priority when elected. I will support streamlined licensing and permit processes as long as it does not sacrifice environmental protection. I support setting aside money to adequately fund the liability for current and future public employee pensions and medical benefits. I believe we must begin aligning the salary and benefits for public employees with those of the private sector. I will work to find ways to provide incentives to new businesses and motivate existing businesses to expand. The least the county government could do is convert the supervisors' slush funds into financial incentives for new businesses coming to Marin County. I'd work to put an end to the consultant boondoggle that exists in the county of Marin, paying a consultant $4,250 for a half a day's work for the supervisors to play nice, or paying a graphics designer $50,000 to design a park sign. But most importantly, I will ask the tough questions before using your tax dollars before committing to any project or task.
Thank you both. Now for the questions. The candidates will have two minutes to respond. We'll start with Tony Schreier, then Judy Arnold, and we will switch off. The first question. Given that campaigns have become expensive and contentious, and that the job of supervisor is complex and all-consuming, what is your motivation for seeking the Office of County Supervisor?
Well, Marin County has been my home all my life, and we've never been so poorly represented as we are today with the current Board of Supervisors. And the wasteful spending must stop. And I've been very active in my community and in Nevada, and I realize that our local officials have been failing the people. We're not being heard, and the special interest groups seem to be getting the upper hand. I think we need to have more people's discussion where more people's voice are being heard. Also, I'm a businesswoman, and I believe that I bring real-life experiences to the table, which is currently lacking on the board.
I have always been interested in government. I majored in international relations. I worked for the Peace Corps in Washington, DC. I was in the League of Women Voters, which is like getting your master's in government. I was the county's first supervisor aide to Gary Giacominis when we instituted A-60 zoning, which was very controversial then, now has turned out to be a great blessing for this county. I worked for two state senators, and there is really where I learned how to govern and how to meet the people and understand what they want and how to get them what they want. I believe that I had done a good job in responding to the people. There is more work left to do. I want to continue doing that, which I will discuss later on in our question-and-answer period. But being a supervisor, I think county government is the most fascinating and the most instructive place to be. You are close enough to the people that you can walk down the hall and say, "This pothole needs filling." But you're far enough away and higher up enough that you can call state government and say, "This is what the county in Marin wants," and you can be listened to, like we did with Mark Levine for his AB 1537.
This question starts with Judy. Supervisors serve on many county and regional commissions and boards. Which areas best fit your strengths and interests?
Well, it seems that transportation has turned out to be really what I have been subjected to or been involved in, and that has turned out to be something that I really do enjoy. I am currently Chair of SMART. I am Vice Chair of the Transportation Authority of Marin, which is the financing agency for transportation in Marin County. I am Chair of the Marin Transit District, which is our local bus service that receives the vast majority of funds from Measure A, and which we recently did a study with Marin Transit Systems. As a result of that, 5,000 hours have been added to the Nevada bus service to make connections easier and to provide better and more efficient transit. So I'm very -- and I'm also a director of the Golden Gate Bridge District. So I think when you look at the state, the regional, and the local transportation, I really understand all four of those and am able to bring this to the people to help get them the kind of transportation system that we need.
Well, I'm interested in the Marin Housing Authority because I believe everybody deserves a safe place to live. And one thing I would like to have, if elected as your supervisor, is an ordinance in Marin County where best practices are mandated for all multifamily developments. And what best practices is, it's a term used to ensure safe, well-maintained, attractive, and crime-free housing for all residents. And I think this is very important, to hold our developers accountable for situations when problems arise, that they provide safe housing. And right now, Nevada, as a result of our community leaders such as myself and the public wanting safe housing, we have a -- it's a voluntary multifamily crime-free housing program. But I would like to see that be mandatory for developers. And neither the California Tax Allocation Committee, that gives the low-income housing tax credit, nor my city of Nevada, nor the Marin Housing Authority, nor the state housing element laws require mandatory best practices for public safety for the residents that live in our multifamily units.
Tony, Marin's regional housing need allocation has been reduced by half for the next housing element cycle because other areas of the Bay Region are voluntarily encouraging housing growth. What is your position on regional planning through Plan Bay Area?
Well, my favorite Speaker of the House, the late, great Tip O'Neill, said, "All politics is local." And Plan Bay Area is top-down. It's regional government, and I believe in bottom-up local control. And what Plan Bay Area does not address is to have safety for the residents in the -- excuse me, safety for the residents in the high-density development so that they can be safe. So I'm against Plan Bay Area because I believe in local control, and Plan Bay Area forts that. Plan Bay Area used to be called One Bay Area, which was more fitting because the regional government wanted us all to be look-alike with high-density housing. And what may be good for San Jose or San Francisco is not so good for Marin County. So I do believe in local control. I think we need to have a wide variety of housing that we can do locally, and we know what's best to address our needs, Nevada and Marin County, versus regional government. Some good, affordable housing projects are like the Gilead House or the Habitat for Humanity. We have three in Nevada. We will have another 10 more. San Rafael has one. I believe we should have more Habitat for Humanity homes, but that is not part of the Plan Bay Area model.
Plan Bay Area is a transportation, land use, and housing plan with a goal of reducing transported-related pollution in the Bay Area. While I support the goals to reduce pollution, I do not believe this "one-size-fits-all" is the answer. The Board of Supervisors submitted five comment letters at my suggestion to A-BAG and MTC during the Plan Bay Area planning process. In particular, we thought the job projections, which translated to housing projections, were too high for Marin County. Thanks to our efforts, the final Bay Area plan reflects a significant reduction in housing projections for the county. And in fact, the housing and job numbers for Marin are much less than those of any other county in the Bay Area. Language is included in the plan that states, and I quote, "Adoption of Plan Bay Area does not mandate any changes to local zoning, general plans, or project review. The region's cities, towns, and counties will maintain control of all decisions to adopt plans and permit or deny development plans." End of quote. For transit-oriented development to really work in a community, you need an adequate transportation system in place. I do not support a broad-based statement or effort to build housing where transit is located, or vice versa. Any new development needs to be analyzed on a case-by-case basis, taking all factors into consideration.
Judy, Marin voters will be asked in June to approve a permanent home for the farmer's market on what is now referred to as the Christmas Tree Lot. Do you agree that this is the best use for this valuable piece of real estate?
I am supportive of the new farmer's market. This has widespread approval, and agriculture is the top industry in this county. To provide a place for our ranchers to sell their produce, for people to come and get healthy, fresh food at the farmer's market, I think is really an example of who we are as a county. It's going to be, it will bring in revenue to the county. It will not cost any money for the county. In fact, we will be getting rent from the farmer's market because it is a public-private partnership. The county is going to put in transportation improvements, sidewalks, pave the parking lot, which is euphemistically called the Christmas Tree Lot. So I do support this, and I'm hoping that the voters will get educated about it, will read about it, and that they too will think that this is a great project for this county.
I endorsed Measure B. I grew up in West Marin, and I was in the Nicasio 4-H and helped start the General Indian Valley 4-H Club, so I'm very pro-agriculture. And I believe in buying local, supporting local, and this would really help our ranchers and our local food suppliers. And it's also important for our children, the next generation, to find out where really this food comes from. So yes, I have endorsed Measure B. I hope the voters will vote for it too. I am very optimistic. There seems to be a lot of enthusiasm in the community for this, so I'm looking forward to shopping there with my nine-year-old and my 12-year-old. I do want to use a little bit of my time. What I did not say about the Plan Bay Area, which I think is important, is that Plan Bay Area is often associated with affordable housing, and it fails in this regard too. For example, Millworks is 124 units, yet only seven deed-restricted units. So it does not, Plan Bay Area does not address our affordable housing needs.
Tony, the state sales tax base rate is 7.5%. Marin voters have approved a 20-year half-cent increase for transportation improvements and a 20-year quarter-cent increase for the SMART train. Is traffic gridlock still a major issue with Marin voters, and is it getting any better?
Well, traffic is an issue, and that's what I'm hearing time and time again when I speak to voters. So yes, it is an issue. I would like to encourage employers to ask for their employees to at least work one day a week from home. I know I do a lot of telecommuting and work, I have an office in my house, so it's oftentimes when my mom asks if I ever leave Nevada, and the answer is no because it's all there. So I want to encourage businesses to have employees work at least one day a week, if possible, from their homes. It's very cost-effective and efficient and takes people off the 101. Do I think the SMART train will take people off the road? I hope so, but the ridership doesn't seem to be there, and that's for specific situations. So I think we have to look towards ways to better carpool, to ask bus riders and bus drivers how we can be more efficient with our routes and how we can shore up gaps within regard to our transportation.
Traffic congestion in the Nevada Narrows is the number-one concern of people in Nevada. I've heard that over and over again. And in my position as Vice Chair of TAM, I worked with MTC and with the TAM to bring in money to widen the Nevada Narrows. It was originally the carpool lane going north, which is where the terrible traffic is in the afternoon, was going to stop at Atherton Drive. Because I pushed Caltrans for more transportation money, that carpool lane is now going to be extended to just a little bit before the landfill, which will then not cause this terrible backup in Nevada. I think getting the Nevada Marin-Sonoma Narrows widened is a very important first step. The county, several years ago, approved telecommuting for our employees. The Transportation Authority of Marin has instituted Catch a Ride, where seniors can call and people volunteer to carpool and can take them places. That takes people off the ride, off the road, and out of their own private automobile. And in 2009, I instituted, after many public meetings, Nevada Dial-a-Ride, where people in Nevada can call and can say, "I would like you to pick me up, and I would like to go to church at 2 o'clock on Sunday. I would like to go to the grocery store." And if there is room, which if you call a day in advance, they'll schedule it. If you call at the last minute, it might be more problematic. And this little bus will drive around and pick you up and take you to these places, wherever you need to go. Also, I helped negotiate a contract between the Golden, a revised contract between the Golden Gate Bridge and Marin Transit Systems, which has added 5,000 more transit hours to Nevada bus service. So I think those are issues that we need to look at and keep improving on.
Thank you. This question starts with you, Judy. The county library's parcel tax is up for a nine-year extension on the June ballot. Should the county adequately fund this department in the future so that the library does not have to keep coming back to the voters for operating funds?
I don't really think we have ever discussed that or looked at that. In particular, I don't ever remember the head librarian of the county discussing this. It's the Marin County Free Library. It really is a department set by itself, even though, of course, one of their branches is located in the Civic Center. What I can say is this, I do support the sales tax for the library. But just to bring it home a little closer, the library is partnering, the county library is partnering with the Nevada School District, and they are going to put a building, a Quonset hut, or a portable, on the Nevada School District land at Hamilton to have, to double, to increase the size of the library, the current library in Hamilton, by twice as much. We need more library space, even more than that, but this will make a big difference. Also, I'd like everyone to know that the county library, with my support, is sponsoring a program this coming fall where every Nevada school child will receive a library card. And we are going to see if that really does make a difference in the reading, in checking out books, because this is so important, especially before they get to third grade.
Well, I've always supported libraries. My nine- and 12-year-old and I and my husband Jim, we go to the library usually about once a week in Nevada on Grand Avenue, and they have, they've had their library card, I think, since they were like four years old, and they enjoy the self-checkouts. With regard to the library tax, taxing the voters versus having the county pay for it, I've always supported the library tax in the past. But what I think we need to look at is, because I need more information about this, is to see full transparency, where is the money going? And also, what we need to do is stop the reckless spending at the Board of Supervisors, and I will address some of those issues later on. But those funds could be used towards funding our library so we wouldn't have to constantly go back to the people and ask them to be taxed.
Tony, please share your thoughts on Marin County pension funding solutions.
Well, that's a very complicated issue, the pension liability situation, and there's no magic bullet. But there are a lot of ways that we can start with the pension liability. We have AAA Moody's rating, yes, but San Jose had a AAA Moody's rating, and they reduced police services and closed libraries, and I'm not willing to do that. What we need to do is stop the wasteful spending at the Board of Supervisors and put that towards our pension liabilities. And I also believe we need to start funding that, more aggressively fund the liability now. We have had put funds into the pension liability, but depending on who you talk to, it can be around 800 million. And what's happening now is we are giving our children our debt, so they are paying for services that we take. One thing we need to start doing is stop paying for so many consultants and stop the consultant boondoggles and put that money towards our pension liability. So again, there's no magic bullet, but we also have to get everybody from the side, to the table, the taxpayers, the county employees, and say, "How can we make this better?" Because I don't think anybody wants to leave this horrendous debt to our children.
Quickly, I just want to add one thing to the library that I forgot. I am the author of two published children's books that I wrote when my children were small, and they were illustrated with another, another mom did it with photographs of all of our children. One is called "When I Grow Up," and the other's "The Lost Smile." Dealing with pension, Marin County has made more progress with pension reform than almost any county in California. Because of our efforts, we have a AAA bond rating from the three major independent rating agencies: Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. The county's unfunded retiree liabilities have dropped $98 million over the past year because of the Board of Supervisors' decision to pay down the pension debt with $50,000 from our reserves last year, as well as experiencing higher-than-expected investment earnings. The county's pension liability is 73% funded. Since I have been on the board, we have made reforms to pension and healthcare benefits for new hires, including raising the retirement age, implementing a lower-cost retiree health plan for all employees, and capping the county's contribution to employee share of cost regarding pension, employee pensions. We established and contributed $26 million to a retiree health trust and adopted a policy to pay our unfunded retiree health liabilities over the next 30 years. I'm committed to continuing these collaborative efforts with our employees, who've been instrumental in the reform areas made these past years. In regard to complaints about consultants, if someone had the experience of actually governing, they would know that this is a way to save money because the alternative is to hire employees and to then have pensions and benefits. What we do, we are the largest employer in Marin County. We act just like a business. We hire people, they do the job, a consultant, and they leave.
This is a big question. Does the Board of Supervisors have a role in addressing overarching environmental challenges, including watershed protection, planning for rising sea levels, drought management, fire prevention, and promoting green energy? Is there a particular environmental issue that stands out for you?
Of course, our board has a huge stand in environment. Our overarching goal is sustainability. Under that, we have the four E's: environment, social equity, education, and economy. We have probably done more for the environment than any county in California, starting in 1972, when we enacted A-60 zoning and saved all of West Marin for ranching, for parks, for open space. I think sea level rise, we have just instituted a study on sea level rise, which our Community Development District is doing this. But I really think my specific issue toward the environment is the watershed issue. Nevada has the second-biggest flooding in the county next to Ross Valley. And when we saw what Ross, the innovative thing that Ross Valley did to address their flooding and also creek restoration and habitat, I then was able to get Nevada to come on as the second area to really work at innovating this watershed program. And that's what we're doing, and the study is almost complete. We will now be going out for community meetings. But you don't just widen creeks and fill them with asphalt. You really do a very environmental work that works better for the habitat but also does reduce flooding. We have also, through SMART, we are going to raise the Nevada Creek Bridge, and that is going to stop the flooding that almost got the Marin Community Hospital in the Great New Year's flood of 2007.
Well, if experience means rapid and wasteful spending, I will take my inexperience anytime. $50,000 to design a park logo when a Nevada student, a high school student, or a San Marin student could have done it for supplies that they desperately need is not acceptable to me. My greatest concern is the right, with regard to the environment, is the rising sea level. We need to start planning aggressively and do a better job of dealing with a one-meter sea level rise. There are lowlands in Nevada and in San Rafael, where a lot of our low-income residents live. And if there was flooding because of water pressures, these residents would be disproportionately displaced, and there would be sewage, drainage, drinking water issues because of the water pressures. So there's no, again, there's no magic bullet on this one, but we need to start working together and do a better job working with the state, the local areas, and map out where flooding will occur, and provide for financial planning costs to prevent flood issues with our infrastructure. And we need to invest in our wetlands because this is a simple solution and a very environmentally solution, environmentally sensitive solution, which is much better than building levees or tidal walls. So I would like to limit development in flood areas and modify building codes for dealing with flood preparation. And we need to work now to fiscally plan for this as well as plan for our And we need to work now to fiscally plan for this, as well as plan for our future generations.
Okay, Toni. Did you fill out any candidate questionnaires for special interest groups? And should your answers be made public in the interest of transparency?
I always believe in transparency. I've filled out a lot of questionnaires. But one thing I will say is the Schreier Campaign does not accept any money from any special interest groups, because Toni Schreier is not for sale. The Schreier Campaign has accepted funds from individuals and small Nevada businesses.
My opponent and I have had many interviews with groups, with the largest group of employees in the county, ask us to come and hear their concerns. My opponent chose not to. I did go and had a one-hour constructive meeting, hearing some of their concerns. Every group that has asked me to come forward and to answer questions and ultimately get their endorsement, I have done so. And often, my opponent has come to be interviewed, not together, but separately. Every group that we have been to, I have received the endorsement, except for one, and that's the citizens, the one-interest group, Citizens for Sustainable Public Pensions.
Marin's faith communities have provided emergency shelter to homeless people during the winter months for six years. What is the county's role in finding a more permanent response to this ongoing need?
Nevada has been a leader in providing for the homeless with the initiation of Homeward Bound, and then their program that comes next after homelessness, which is job preparation called Next Key. We really are the beacon and the example that the rest of the county needs to look at. Clearly, the biggest homeless problem is in San Rafael. And we know through our County's Health and Human Services that most homeless people, they are there for two main reasons. Number one, for drug or alcohol addiction, or number two, mental health. The county, through our social services program, it works with the homeless in dealing with mental health, in dealing with addiction, but the problem is very large. We would like to fund and to help and participate in being part of a permanent homeless shelter. The problem is, no city wants it. And since the biggest problem is in San Rafael, I'm hoping that the county and the city of San Rafael can work together and can find an area where everyone can agree this is a good place for our homeless, and to begin then, not only just housing them, but then training them for jobs like Homeward Bound does.
Thank you. Oh, I wanted to address something with regard to special interest groups. There are some special interest groups I didn't go to their forum or interview because the decision was already made. The leaders had already given money or had endorsed my opponent, so it was merely a formality for me to be there. And I felt my time would be better, listening to the voters, to what they were concerned about, rather than what special interest groups were thinking. With regard to the homeless, yes, we do have a homeless problem, and I do agree with Judy. Nevada has done a great job with Homeward Bound. And I was involved in my church rest program, and that was a great program, and I'm sorry to see that not continue. What I, my dream and what I would envision is an area in Marin County to have it Homeward Bound Two, which is, would be a currently abandoned area or a blighted area in our county, where we could have a permanent, another permanent homeless shelter. Because right now, Homeward Bound is doing a phenomenal job, and they are our model. And I'd like to see another Homeward Bound in Marin County and have the community and the county support that.
Toni, is the high cost of housing a barrier to attracting and keeping businesses in Marin?
Well, the housing issue is very complex, and I do believe there is, we need to have a wide variety, as I mentioned before, of housing. Is it a barrier in some areas? Absolutely, I would think it would be a barrier. But there are some people that do work in Marin that don't want to live in Marin County for various reasons: family, their spouse's job is in another area, and we still, we live in a free society, so people have choice. But yes, I do believe that the housing costs are very high. I'm a realtor and a businesswoman, and I do know this firsthand. And I do think that we should look at that, but again, not the way our regional government wants us to look at, but locally address that.
We know through the, especially with the formation of the New Marin Economic Forum that has been in existence for two years, and we're trying very hard to bring the life sciences to Nevada, to provide jobs to all of Marin, but especially to Nevada because of the location of the Buck Center. There are many young people, smart doctorates, that want to be involved in this, but they don't want to live in Marin County because they can't afford to. Our rents are now sky-high. And so, we have a responsibility to do our fair share, to help provide for these people that want to, these professionals that want to come and live here, as well as our teachers, et cetera. One thing that the Marin Economic Forum is doing that perhaps might help increase more affordable housing, we are, have initiated a study through the Community Development Department to speed up without sacrificing any environmental concerns permits, same-day permits, if people want to come in to do some renovation to their house or to perhaps do a second unit. That could almost be done over the counter or online. We also have what we euphemistically call the Red Tape Committee, which looks at different permits that can speed up the process. This is all one issue: housing, jobs, quality of life. And this is something that you have to work toward, understanding all the different ramifications and the different agencies that are involved.
Judy, what makes District Five special?
Oh, wow. Well, first of all, District Five is the largest geographic area other than West Marin in the county. We have, I mean, walking the precincts, it's so different than walking precincts in San Rafael, which is much more complex, or in other cities. I think, I think that Nevada, incorporated and unincorporated, is really a secret to the rest of the county, because we have so many rare and beautiful places here. And you can only really see that by walking it, which I am doing and have done. And it is a beautiful area. It also is, the fifth district is very family-oriented. We did a survey. We are going to get the Nevada Theater reopened this year. I have sworn to do that. And we did a online survey, and the largest answers that the people in Nevada wanted was to have family films and independent films. We're a very family-oriented community. And this opening, the Downtown Nevada Theater, will be another thing for families. The second thing they wanted was live music. And I also think that the electorate in the fifth district are very smart, very educated, and really do want to take the time to understand the issues and ask the hard questions. I have been very proud to represent Nevada as a city councilperson and as a supervisor. And I believe in the Nevada, I believe in their values, and I believe that they are really going to become the leader in many areas in this county on many issues.
Well, I grew up in West Marin, my husband grew up in Mill Valley, and we said, where would we like to raise our children? And we chose Nevada. And one of the many reasons why we chose Nevada, and number one, is because of its diversity. It's very welcoming, and my biracial family fits in really well in our community. I love the open space. I'm a country girl. Nevada has done a phenomenal job in preserving our open space, our trails, for multi-users. It's also a really nice sense of community. Nevada has been the leaders in so many areas. One is the leader in affordable housing. We have more affordable housing than any other place in Marin. We have 20% or so of the population, yet about 33% or more of the affordable housing in Marin County. The sense of community is phenomenal. We have the pioneer spirit in Nevada. In our neighborhood, not only do we know our neighbors, but we know our neighbors' animals' names, and it's a very, very welcoming home. I love it, because there's baseball and Little League, and Nevada reminds me of motherhood and baseball and apple pie. And my daughter loves vaulting, and there's a very reasonable vaulting program, which people from all over the Bay Area go to. But what I love about Nevada is I can still have dirt, shovel, manure, and still be a businesswoman all in one day.
Toni, are you concerned about safety and trail degradation issues from the growing popularity of mountain biking? Do you think the open space district will be able to resolve conflicts between hikers, bikers, and equestrians over trail use?
Well, basically, this comes, the answer is yes. Do I think we will be able to overcome our conflicts? This comes down to basic consideration. I am an equestrian, I like to jog, I like to walk, I like to walk my dog, and I like to hike. And I think public safety, of course, if everybody is safe, and I think everybody wants to be safe, that should be our number-one priority. And I think we're doing a good job of talking to people. I recently attended an event where the bikers and the equestrians got together, and it was a nice barbecue and a fundraiser for a woman who had fallen off her horse. So I think we are coming together. I am on the trails a lot. I rarely see inappropriate behavior, so I think we're looking at the extreme. But if we all, if we all come together for the greater good of open space, I believe that we can do a great job, an even better job of what we're doing now. I do support the Stafford Lake Bike Park. I think that's going to be a great thing for our families and our bikers to have an exclusive trail and bike events, and I'm really looking forward to that, being a part of Nevada, and I really support it.
The county is working on a road and trail management plan, which is going to be used as a roadmap for making policy decisions related to trail use. It doesn't get, it doesn't say, here's where a trail will go, but it's a matrix where it can, where you can say, let's look at these different questions, and then that will point us to the answer. The safety of users and environmental protection needs to be considered when providing trail access to open space. I am in favor of providing the use of certain trails to single-user groups. Where possible, I would like to see connectivity of trails for all user groups. I am supporting, I am supportive of closing illegal trails in environmentally sensitive areas, as well as legal trails that might be encroaching on a particularly sensitive area. To increase opportunities for mountain bikers, the county will be opening a 17-acre bike park at Stafford Lake. It will provide experiences for riders of all ages and skill levels. Fundraising for the bike park is going so well that $500,000 has been raised, and we are going to start construction for the first phase of this bike park. It will be the only one of its kind in the county.
Judy, are big-box stores good for Marin? Why or why not?
I think, again, this is, has to be decided on an individual basis. I don't think we're ever going to see a Walmart coming to Marin County. But for example, Costco, in vintage jokes in Nevada, they really were able to sort of help pull us out of the recession because of the sales tax, and people come from all over to shop there. I'm not opposed to that. I think it's a question of where they're going to go, exactly the services that they provide and the goods that they provide. And so, it's, I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all answer. I think you need to look at this on an individual basis.
Well, I'm generally against big-box stores, because I always support the mom-and-pop and small businesses. However, I do think we need to think about the environment first and the impacts of that on any big-box store that would be proposed. So again, generally against it, want to support the small business, the local proprietor, but it would have, I'd have to have more information of where it would go. Would it be impacting the environment? Would it be on wetlands? And I would hate to see, I saw 60 Minutes once where a big-box store came, they wiped out all the small businesses, and then when their big-box store didn't work, they just left. So I don't ever want to see that to happen to Nevada.
What suggestions do you have, Toni, for providing services to an aging population in Marin?
Well, it's interesting that the aging population, because the average voter in Nevada is 55 years old. So to add services, my mom is very close to me, and we are glad that we're very close 30 minutes away. But she's in West Marin, and I'm very excited that they have West Marin Senior Services and an option like that for her. I would like to see more services for our seniors, such as, we do have Meals on Wheels, but even expand that. Also, more efficient bus services. I've been hearing feedback from our seniors that the Dial-a-Ride is not as efficient as they would like it to be. So find out how, with the transportation issues for our seniors. Also, look into volunteers, as well maybe paid people, to come in and visit our seniors. One thing I have done is bring my 161-pound Newfoundland dog to some shut-ins, and people really like to see pets and people, and I bring my children, and have more outreach to our seniors.
Nevada has a huge growing population of seniors, and in fact, the county of Marin has what we call the Silver Tsunami coming. By far, the majority of the people in our county are going to be seniors, and more so than any other county. Housing is going to be a critical need for seniors. The, Marin and the city of Nevada recently completed a Warner Creek apartment building for all low-income seniors in Nevada off Diablo Boulevard, where there once was a marshy wetlands. My opponent opposed that, because she said that Nevada, that the seniors would have grandsons that could come and visit and commit crime. I think that we have an obligation to providing housing for seniors. I think transportation is critical. And the Marin Transit District is offering Catch a Ride, where people can, seniors or other people can volunteer to take seniors to appointments. This is really an essence of who Nevada is as a community, helping each other. Providing meaningful activities for seniors is critical. And here, I really have to praise the Margaret Todd Center and the city of Nevada for the services that they provide to seniors. I was happy, really, to come in and provide some county funding to keep that going when the city couldn't do that because of the recession, and now the Episcopal group is running the Margaret Todd Center. So I want seniors to know that we care about them, that we're there, and that we want to hear from them and what their needs are, and we're going to try to fill them.
Judy, is it reasonable to promote affordable housing projects in Marin, given the value of land in the county?
I think one thing that's going to make it more reasonable to provide affordable housing is the, this exciting bill that Mark Levine and I have worked on, AB 1537. When they had the big furor in the city of Nevada over their housing element some years ago, I called Jared Huffman, who was then the Assembly Member, and asked him if he would introduce a bill that would change Marin's designation from metropolitan, which we are not, and which then means that you have to plan for 30 units per acre when doing a housing element, to suburban, which is what our surrounding counties are labeled and which is who we are. And that would mean we would have to plan for 20 units per acre. Why that's important is, it's going to make it easier for us to build affordable housing, not dense housing, but 20 units per acre. That seems fair. The mood in the Assembly at that time, when Jared introduced the bill, they were not going to listen to Marin, and they were not going to let it out of committee. Now, I'm so happy to say that Mark Levine introduced the bill, which is going to make Marin a pilot project for the seven, the eight years that our- Marin a pilot project for the eight years that our current housing development will be in effect. We will be able to plan, if it's signed by the governor, for 20 units per acre of housing, which will make it more affordable, which will enable nonprofit builders like Eden, like Ecumenical Association for Housing, like Bridge Housing, to come in and put housing there that is affordable. So I'm hopeful that this bill, because it passed out of the Housing and Community Development Committee, which was the toughest committee to get out of, it passed unanimously. And now it's going to go to the floor of the Assembly and then on to the Senate. So everybody needs to do everything they can to notify Assembly Member Mark Levine and send him their support for AB 1527.
Well, Novato, as one of the leaders in the county, have already done that locally. I was on the working, the ad hoc working group and followed the Novato Housing Element, where we did get it reduced to 20 to 23 units per acre without going to the state. Unfortunately, the supervisors voted for 30 units per acre in the unincorporated areas of Novato. So in Novato, what we did, we spent three years and dug our heels in and says, how can we reduce densities? And we argued, we reasoned, we challenged, we looked at staff reports, saw any questions that we had to go over, and we got the densities reduced to 20 to 23 units an acre. What I want to address is about Warner Creek, because there's some misinformation my opponent is spreading. I was concerned with Warner Creek because the lot was being blighted, before it was being built. I personally, with permission, painted over the graffiti, picked up litter with my family and friends. And my concern was, and the community's concern, was at one time it was going to be 55 years or older, and we were hoping it would be true senior housing at 62 units or more. And they listened to us, and they did that, where everybody had to be 60 units per acre. And across the street at Wendover Apartments, we had challenges with people that were not on the lease that were committing crimes. So we didn't want somebody to have a family member to live in Eden Housing that wasn't on the lease. So one thing, as a commissioner of Marin Housing Authority, which the supervisors should have done, is had Marin Housing advertise in Novato so that Novato residents had the opportunity to apply, just like everybody else, for the Warner Creek. And as a result, out of 61 units, only nine in the beginning were Novato residents, when we should have had just as opportunity as everybody else, and they should have advertised in Novato.
Well, thank you both. That ends the questions. Before the candidates make their closing statements, I wanted to give you a few important dates. Election Day is Tuesday, June 3. The last day to register to vote is May 19, two weeks before the election, or to re-register if you have moved since you last voted. Requests for absentee ballots must be received by the Elections Department by May 27, one week before the election. Early voting opens at the Civic Center, Room 121, on May 6. If you go to the league's smartvoter.org website and enter your street address and zip code, you will see your own ballot with links to the candidates, issues, ballot measures, and information about the voting process itself. Now the candidates will make closing statements of two minutes. We'll start with Toni Schreier.
In my opening statement, I stated some of the things I would do as your supervisor. I would like to close with the things that I will not do. I will not take illegal contributions. I will not take special interest money. I will not spend $50,000 to design a park sign. I will not spend $850 an hour for a feel-good consultant. And I will not spend $18 million on a bike bridge for less than 100 people. And I will not spend another $32 million on a computer system that does not work. And I will not vote to give myself a pay raise. I want to thank Novato for your support. I ask for your vote. Thank you.
In the past 20 years, I have worked for two state senators, served on the Novato City Council. I understand how government works, and I know how to govern. I have worked to improve our quality of life by continuing work on the Narrows to relieve traffic congestion in Novato, by bringing economic vitality to Marin through the creation of the Marin Economic Forum, initiating the purchase of 56 acres of wetlands for restoration and saving millions in mitigation fees, by balancing the county budget and enacting meaningful pension reform, making education one of our county's top priorities, changing Marin's designation as suburban, which means lower housing densities. I ask for your support to help me complete the work on the Novato Narrows, to bring the train to town, to attract more jobs, and to initiate the Novato Watershed. I am proud to be endorsed by the North Bay Leadership Council, the Marin County Farm Bureau, Marin Women's Political Action Committee, the Novato Chamber of Commerce, Congressman Jared Huffman, Marin Superintendent of Schools Mary Jane Burke, three of our county supervisors, four Novato Council members, former Novato Police Chief Joseph Kreins, Sheriff Bob Doyle, Marin Fire Chief Jason Weber, District Attorney Ed Babarian, and many others, including Novato Fire Chief Jason Weber. My website is judiarnold.com. My phone number is 505-2568. I'm asking for your vote June 3.
Thank you to the candidates and to our timekeeper Lori Nardone. And thank you for watching.